This conference will now be recorded.
Is anyone sitting here?
No.
Here?
I think you are.
It's probably not.
Okay, before we, before we go into the agenda here, I, it's my apology, I had Anita on here just, just to do an update on something related, so you're kept up to date. So Anita, you have the floor.
So I really just have one thing that I'm hoping we can all agree on. I've spoken to Nikam, Allison McGee, Saranac Lake Village Clerk in Essex County Elections, getting various conflicting advice on how to do the ballots. But ultimately, what Allison McGee just told me, I think really brings it home for scanned ballots versus the kind we have to, non-scannable, which we have to look at each one. Allison said that, that basically, the scannable ones, if they're folded, put in an envelope, unfolded, people do their vote, fold it again, put in the envelope, there's almost no chance that those are going to scan properly. So we're going to have to do them by hand anyway. So my recommendation is that we do scannable for people who come here live and that we mail out the non-scannable kind. Does, does the board agree with that?
I didn't quite like spending money while we're just handing back.
Right, and there'll just be an exercise in frustration that night as we're trying to slip them through the machines rejecting most of them. So if that's okay with all of you, then that is what we'll do. And, and people gave me some other reasons to do that too, but that was the one that was most significant.
Well, I think this doesn't sound like anybody has a comment that they're planning to tinkle. We've done an outstanding job of gathering information. Certainly, certainly the COVID issues have made our election more complicated than it would ordinarily be. And, and you know, we're, we're, we're treading on some new ground, trying, trying to get, we'll see what, what the absentee ballot response is, but.
So far, I've gotten two applications from within this building. I want to say, no, please. You're, you're coming here anyway, just come vote in person. But you know, that's everybody's right to vote by absentee. No, they don't. As a matter of fact, anybody could even mail it in, and then if they decide by nine o'clock that night they want to come, they can still vote in person. And because that's, that's part of the reason we wait until nine to start opening those absentee, because the ones that will match the book, if anybody's already been in that day, they'll be discarded. So.
Wow, that's, so that's going to be.
That, yes. Yeah. Okay, that was all I had. So.
Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome. We're on the same page. Thank you.
Okay, Brad has quite a few items, all of which we're interested in. So I think, I think we're getting, we're getting a first look at the instruction schedules that I, we also have received from Ivan, and it's in draft form because Mindy and I discovered that it's not 100% right yet, how the various grant funds that are going into the Main Street project will, will pass some sharing with you, but it's, it's smart draft because we know it's, we've got to do more, we've got to meet again with Ivan on it. But it's all good work. There's a lot, a lot of detail. What people, what Ivan, one of the grants in particular has been partially used for the sewer project that is not part of the $10 million Cubricky contract for Main Street. Now, we did that, you may recall, two years ago. So we'll have, we'll have an updated sheet once we've sat down with Ivan and sorted that out again. It's, it's an incredibly useful sheet, but we need to make sure we got it right when we start. So Brad, you've got a schedule there, I'll let you.
Yeah, you know, I sent the construction schedule out to everybody. I don't know if you got to see it. I sent it out just so everybody could kind of review it. This is kind of, this is the rough draft. We're going to discuss this on Thursday, the 25th, at 10:30, we have a construction meeting at the conference center. It's going to be the contractor, the state, a couple people from the village, and we're going to discuss, kind of going over this. The big thing on the construction schedule that I see, they are requesting to be able to, during the July and August shutdown, to work in Number One Park and also some of the parking lots, namely the big one, most of it. I met with Mike Spishock today from Cubricky, we went up and looked. He thinks he can limit it to like a third of the parking lot at a time, so that two thirds would be parking. They were hoping that would be acceptable. They have a whole thing here on, this says Main Street Park, and that all has to do with the parking lots and that. I believe that we discussed that the main lot in the middle would not be probably doable because we're going to need that parking. But the big lot, they want to put the drainage structures in and then start laying pipe in July and August. They figure it's two weeks to do the drainage structure, then jump around the parking lot. One sticking point is, I don't know if anybody saw, but Greg has asked, I'd have been lost the whole parking lot if it happens this year. So I don't know.
And that's a week's duration.
Yeah, so.
I couldn't fathom how they got the congregation all there.
Yeah.
Even, even if the vaccines are rolling.
Their, their finish line, which ordinarily would have been in the oval, is going to have to be out on the, on the highway. They've given us preliminary information. They initially looked at the intersection in front of the post office, but DOT indicated that at five o'clock, that's part of what's necessary to get traffic flowing on that end of the street. So then they were looking at leaving it at the entrance to the oval over here, which is probably, which DOT's perspective, it's okay because that section of the street is closed anyway until the race is done. But all of this is presumed because if, if it's all contingent of finding where we are with the standards that are required for any event, as to whether they're going to happen. So it's all, it's all betting on the com, betting on the fact that maybe there'll be an opportunity in, in late July. I know Jay and I are, we, 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 we meet with these people regularly, and there's another event meeting coming up, but I think the crews are sponsoring next week. And we're doing the best we can, but reality is, we can put a date on the calendar, it's always, it's, it's always, if everything else is in line, you may be able to do this, maybe not. Same problem with Bill Miller and the other night. We're, so, so it's, it's always going to be subject to whatever conditions exist from the COVID standpoint.
Should we, at the board, we're looking to play it by ear, or we should really prioritize this project to get it out of the way during this particular time? Because as the economy starts, it's never really slowed down that much, but by next, shouldn't we maximize the amount of time that the downtime, the, the less probability of an event actually happening, we just kind of prioritize the project to get it accomplishing the curve?
We need a lot of work in July and August to.
Well, the minimal amount of work.
Yeah. Well, well, that's, that's a discussion for Thursday also, because when you look at this, I mean, it, it's all broken up for, I think, crews to be working in those areas, but like they were telling me today, this is negotiable. They want to know if they can use a third and a third and a third and keep two thirds open all the time. But as far as the schedule goes right here, this is still a draft. And I see some things that I think are wrong out here, so I, that's going to be a discussion for Thursday also. But the main thing that I need to know tonight or Thursday is, do we feel comfortable giving them a little portion of the thing so they can stick around here and work during July and August?
Well, you know, I, let's face it, the Main Street project takes priority, should take priority over all of those types of things. So, and again, what, what we, what I've been telling anybody that's talking about events is, until we have the construction schedule, I can't tell you what's going to happen. I've got a request for the use of Mitz Park next September for the Walk Out of Darkness. If there's an organization that I'd love to do, whatever I can to help, given the mental health issues we're dealing with, they're COVID related all over, I, I would want to help them, but I told them they may have to go to the horse show grounds. Number One Main Street's going to be torn up, parking is going to be an issue. They can park where they can find a place to park. I said, that's my point. May not be any parking. So I, so now that we had, now that we're, we're in discussions with the contractor, we'll, we'll get that, we'll get that clarified. But, and, and the same thing has been true with everybody else, and it's upon the, the project, what we can do and can't do. And I think, I think we have to continue to maintain that policy. Certainly, anything we can do to make sure this project flows as smoothly as possible, I think the board should endorse and support. But as long as we can maintain the essential integrity that July and August, the primary Main Street area is.
Well, they said no, no street or sidewalk work during July and August. It's right, they shut down street and they open up the streets. They were just requesting July and August to be in Number One Park and the big parking.
I'm impressed with how much work they expect to get done in the first year.
Well, I think, I think that's what, that's why the construction in that main lot is for this year.
I thought I saw on there that they're going to be laying granite this fall.
They, they want to be doing portions of the sidewalk. They, they have stressed to me that they, they feel that they can get the water main done in the first two months.
Wow.
They could have the water main done and then start, but that's to be seen. They figure they can lay under, but I.
Every 10-year-old kid in town is going to be lined up on the street watching that equipment work. So.
The question on the water line and the stubs, we're going to put six-inch stubs over the building. If a building would like to punch it through while we're doing this, is that something that we can do or we won't?
That, that will be for them to work a deal with the contractor themselves. That will not be for us to get involved in. The contractor was told upfront that there might be certain people that have come to you and asked for you to put it in, but that will be a deal that's made between the contractor and that individual or that business.
But they have a timeline and it won't alter their.
No, no, that will be something separate that they'll have to make a deal with them. They might have to bring a separate crew and just do that for them. Like, they're working only for them. Because we're, it's, I want to keep it separate from Austin. So we talked to them, and like I said, Mike Spishock, he's one of the supers on the job. He has offered that after this construction meeting, he would come to one of these meetings if people wanted to ask him questions directly here.
I think that's helpful. Do, I think that'd be really good. Here's the problem. The meeting on the 25th, the meeting room, even though it's over at the conference center, there's more room over there, we're, we're restricted to 13 people total, which means only three and Brad's certainly got to be one and two additional village. They've got, the two inspectors will be there, the contractor has three, DOT has two representatives, Kathleen Swazow has to be there, there'll be one, Creighton and one, and Ivan, and that's it. Thirteen.
And we, we're, we're trying to figure out how we're going to fit because they want to bring the, because they're going to have two crews, they want to bring that other superintendent from Cubricky to that meeting, which is understandable.
That would make sense.
So somehow, we're going to have to jump it around, but we'll deal with that on Thursday.
Before we get too far away from it, I understand the big parking lot, one third, one third, one third. You mentioned one Main Street. What would they do there?
Redoing the park, put the drainage structure in the park.
So it won't affect the parking, the Main Street, just the park itself?
Yeah, because one of the big infiltration basins is in Number One Park. They want to install that infiltration basin, and then they want to start, start putting the steps in and redoing the whole park.
Okay. What's the timeframe for that, do you think? Like, without really.
You mean, how long it would take?
Yeah, because you're, if you're thinking summer, the three-stage vehicles there.
It will, it'll be equipment in the, in the park, yes.
That also raises the issue that, you know, we've got a boat rental operation going from the back side that relies on the park, so we're going to have to alert Forrest Larry to the fact that he may have, in addition to the Ironman challenges, he may have some business challenges.
Yeah, and I guess that's what's, I forgot, Mr. Day's complaint is the parking in the upper Main Street was constricted, and if we do, we do that, it may constrain more of the parking as we go around the alley, as we move to the permanent parking. Would it impede that?
Well, it's.
That's what I'm saying, if it is, and if it's a sacrifice that we have to make, then.
It's no, it's going to be, it's not going to affect, you know, I mean, the outcome of the, the project is this, the amount of parking is going to be the amount of parking. But they will probably have less parking during July and August up there because of the construction, if they did work in the park. It looks like it'd take a week or so to get the drainage structure in there, and then it would be small equipment, where they could probably park away, just have the equipment working in the park. I mean, because what I see now is, it's installed drainage, and it's, it's backfill stairs, granite, put in sidewalks, and it, but it's all broken up, so I, I have to wait till early Thursday.
The stage on that big bump out, I understood.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's a significant bump out that's there now. So it's not going to take away from parking, they're going to drag the equipment right out of the construction.
The, the equipment will be in the park, will be out on the street. There, that'll be the same amount of parking that they're, they're going to have when they get done, which is, they're going to, it's going to be limited.
I just, as long as it, you know, maintains that same level, it just seems to be the, I think that would be the biggest thorn inside, or the major, most, largest irritant if we, if it does dramatically reduce the, the sort of the access and the flow of the parking in that area. I understand the necessity of it, I just wanted to make the project as smooth as possible.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, on Thursday, we can discuss it with them, what they're, really their feeling is, because what are you going to actually be doing in the park? Because when you read this, it's kind of hard to know where they are exactly, and just know that they told me this is Main Street Park and the parking lots, but.
Brad, another consideration, I don't know if anyone's thought about it, but we have the advantage of what, 16, almost 17 million people captive audience, because they couldn't go anywhere, they couldn't fly coming out of New York and New Jersey. We had no events, and we were busy. If all of a sudden by July, what, 50, 60% of the population gets vaccinated, I don't think that's realistic. I see them jumping on jets and going somewhere. And if we don't have events, I think it could be very slow, and it might make a whole difference in what Cubricky does or doesn't do. If that's the case, we might be really dead.
Well, that's something that we can take, once we know that.
Just keep it in the back of your mind, because it's possibilities.
I mean, I'm sure they would be happy to take something that's going to be done in September and move it to August if they can. I'm sure they'd be happy to do that. Mainly, what they're trying to do is retain their construction crew here as much as they can, so that when they go back to work or there's something that, that can get done, they have them here. So they're not sending them or switching to another job, because you know how that goes.
Relocate all the equipment, bring it all back.
But, so we'll discuss it on Thursday, and we'll see what they have to say, and then I'll see if Mike can come here and maybe ease some of our gears.
It's a possibility. It's not a far. Let's pray it doesn't happen.
Well, the other, the other reason that that would be helpful is that the committee that's been working on a, on a plan to keep the community informed on a regular basis of what impacts they might expect along the street, had asked that they be allowed to have that maybe two or three of their members sit in on the construction meeting. It's absolutely not possible now, given the restrictions. So if Spishock can, can do something for us separately, then I think we can, we can.
That's, that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to ask Haley to wait till we get Mike here to see him directly with them, and then they can give them.
Yep.
That way we have less seats, and it'll probably be, it's going to be difficult for her anyways. This isn't something she's going to get any information out of anyways.
No, not at this point. The only thing that she'll get is she'll recognize the people when she does that for her up there.
But, so after, after Thursday, we'll have more information on that. So that gets the pre-construction meeting. I see you have on here that the GIDP grant was extended.
Yeah, I got a letter from Environmental Facilities yesterday, which I will sign if, if we had. On February 10th, we had requested consideration of extension of those grants to project completion dates, this November 2023, and they've actually agreed to that. I just have to sign this and return it. So that keeps that funding intact. That brings us to the next item.
The funding sources, you have that, so we already talked about that. And then, when you get down to the Main Street driveway, what I wanted to bring up, this is.
Oh, on the funding sources, I, I'm going to, I'm going to give you guys copies of these sheets. They're, as I've said, they're. Street going that way, just.
Overall, we have a.
Yeah, this is a really great patch of the funding. It doesn't contemplate much of alone at all, but like I said, where you, where you're looking at the items, the smart GI items, that's green initiative items. And then you look at the grants, under GI, they've got a million eight fifty. As we know, Mindy knows that we've used a portion of that on the sewer work that was done before. So that number is suspect at the moment, and we'll, we'll revise it so that's, Brad, we need Ivan to do that.
Okay. The driveway entrance on Main Street, which the chief and I have been dealing with back and forth, Ivan and I looked at it. We asked Creighton Manning just to give us their opinion. Creighton Manning's opinion was, state approved it. If you want to widen it, state approved it the way it was. So obviously, it meets their standards enough where they feel comfortable. Ivan and I have decided that we are going to try to widen it as far as we can and, and fan the end of the driveway, but he is not going to get what he sent us. I don't know if everybody saw what he sent. He had standards out there that would have made his driveway at the end, it would have been 26 feet wide.
56-foot tractor trailer could make the turn in there.
Yeah.
There's ever been people in there.
Was his name Jim?
Jim. So.
Is this being recorded?
Yes, yes. But he, it would be 26 feet wide. So there, there's no way that we can accommodate that. No way. So what we're doing is having Creighton Manning look at it, see what standards we can meet, and then I will discuss it with him once I have a drawing. Right now, I don't have anything. I think we can accommodate some of it, but I just don't know if we can get to what. We can't get 26 feet. It's just, it's just not possible. I mean, there wouldn't be a crosswalk there, there wouldn't be, and having that harden line have to.
Well, the interesting thing is, he's one of two private driveways on that side of the street, and the other one's just a short distance down the street. It's probably more, more constricted than his is. The other interesting point is, is there's more than one property owner that uses that Grace Way Drive, or at least has the rights to use it. And he's the only one that complains. Other users, Jimmy Shay has access to it, I believe. Whoever owns the Shay, the old Shay's Market Building has access to the back. Gray Shay's home is under the ownership of people from Canada, I believe. We're not, and, and there's going to be construction going on there. We're not hearing any complaints from anybody but this one person.
Well, we, we will see what we can do and what we can't, because we, we don't disagree that it would be nice to have a little flair.
A little flair at the end.
But, so we will see what we can do, and then I'll discuss it with him and see if that works.
His, his, his complaint about cars encroaching on the driveway, it is true. I know in all the years I worked at the bank, I used to come up that hardware driveway, and it would be tough because you can't see oncoming traffic. And the, the, the bank driveway in those days was even worse than his because the pitch was, you're, you're looking at the top of your hood.
That's like one of those.
But, you know, to the extent that we can accommodate it, we, we certainly, now's the time to try to, but certainly, we can't tear the whole project apart and start over with the idea that we're going to give it more space and.
And the signage for that will be here tomorrow. We're going to start at the end of the hashed-out white mark, and we're going to have a sign that says, no parking here to driveway, with an arrow going to the left.
Yep.
And then we will be one on the other side with an arrow pointed to the right, saying no parking here to driveway.
Is this the loading zone right by Ivan's?
It used to be their car spot.
Yeah, yeah. So we're not, we're eliminating parking there.
No.
No, we're not eliminating.
There's no parking on the.
What happened, Jason, what happened, Jason, there's a little slashed-out mark, maybe from you to you, maybe, maybe even longer than the plate, as long as this table.
Yeah.
Well, with it covered in snow, people are parking right up to the driveway again. So I'm just going to go to the end of it, put a sign pointing back towards the driveway. And then on the other side, we'll go back off the driveway a few feet, because what happens is the sign's right on the edge of the driveway that says no parking driveway. So people bump their bumper right to it, or just over it, and it's causing the police department. Hey, so we're going to push the signs back so that it widens out where they can't park, but we're not going to lose any more parking.
And then there's a crosswalk that's involved in this whole area as well. I mean, the, the plan, the, the plan for the Main Street reconstruction, with what Brad and Creighton Manning will come up with, will be as much as we can offer. He's not wrong. His, his, I, he's just, he's just difficult to deal with. And I tried to copy you on some of the comments that I've sent to him. He will not do the thing that would be the most helpful. If those department gets phone calls and we log the complaint in, we, we create a log of this. He doesn't do that. He, he doesn't have much interest in that, it seems. And consequently, there's no record of, of the driveway being blocked all the time. But it's funny, that driveway's been there over 100 years, and until he came along, nobody ever had a problem with it.
I, I could, I've never seen, in my own, in my personal experience, I've never seen the driveway blocked. I can see how it can be aggravating getting to the outlet of the road and not being able to see the oncoming truck coming from your left.
So we'll, we'll put the signage up and see if that helps until we get the project going.
At, at this point, he's already advised me further email that the sign won't work, but we're going to do it anyway because it's all we can do.
Well, it, it's going to be a lot better than what's there. It will be a lot more helpful for the police department than what's there.
It's a project's completed.
Yeah. And then, Mirror Lake Drive sidewalk grant, this one's kind of for Mindy. Lorenzo, do you know him?
Uh huh.
Okay, he called me. I have a number for him if you don't have his number, but he informed me that you can't switch that grant on his side. We have to go through Dan Steck's office?
Yeah, I've been in, in process of doing that. Dan McKee or Macca, Macca Kate or whatever his last name is, he is the primary contact person. He's been trying to track down where it is, because I had to go back through the Senate and get reapproved.
Okay. Yeah, he just, he just wanted to know. He called down to the office, like, I talked with him, very nice guy. He just said, really nothing. I tried to see if there was something he could do on his end. He tried, and then he called me back and said, you have to go through their office, so.
Yeah, I talked to him two or three times before Betty was out of office, and he had given me Sharon's phone number in Betty's office. And I started with her, and then when Betty got done and Dan took over, I got another Dan's phone number. So I'm still working on it.
All right.
And this was the proportions of money to the town and the village, is that what it is?
Yeah, I just, some, I don't.
They reversed the allocation between town and village. We can't just simply exchange judges.
Oh, we got the larger one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Seems reasonable. We do so much more. We need the money.
That's what I said.
We'll put it to you.
It didn't work.
It takes an act of the legislature to make the correction that everybody's on city.
Well, I was hoping this thing would have gone up for a while.
So, yeah, he was just making sure that we were, he, he wasn't even sure the project was finished. That's why he called me, and I said, yeah, that's, that's finished. So.
Have we put any salt on that sidewalk yet?
Just sand. I've been there, but anything besides sand on it. And we've only sanded it a handful of times.
We've been lucky to. We've been lucky this winter. We haven't had any icing.
Yeah, when it stays cold, you don't get ice. It's, it's just, this last thing on here is the water plant Craig asked me. I think he was going to hand something out.
We got a, it's not a national news, we got a notification from the FBI that's talking about the situation that occurred at a Florida water plant where somebody hacked into the system and they increased the amount of sodium hydroxide, also known as L I into their drinking water. And obviously, it got caught, thank God, before it before the public was exposed to that water. In any event, this is, this is where Brad and I have discussed it. We're, I, I sent this to Brad first because clearly water is any of our activity could be attacked. I, I think Brad's, Brad's department's handling of, of the SCADA system there is when they're not using computer, they unplug the link, so there's no. That's absolutely the best firewall that I know of. You can't hook in, you can't get in.
Well, Brad, how much you told me unless I got it wrong, you don't control the, the plant remotely from you know, the end of the plant there, probably needs to be done and do it.
You could have originally done that, but if you remember back, when we started that, L I was against it. So we, we decided the only time you can get on and remotely control it is if you plug it in and then you can get into network. We only do that for when they have to work on the system. Now, the system is so old that with this new SCADA upgrade, that's something we have to discuss because they're saying there's enough firewalls and security now that we could have remote access to certain things. The only thing I would really like to have remote access to in the water system is to be able to shut down. Like if there's a problem and something's an issue, we can just kill it so it's not pumping anymore. But a lot of these companies, they say there's nothing to worry about. This is probably like ours, it's probably old and antiquated. But our system has never been operated remotely. There is no connection unless they're working on our computer. We plug it in, they, they get in there and they do what they need to do and then we unplug it.
But they're, but they're not connected to the internet while they're doing it. That's what the, where older the computer, the older the computer system, the more vulnerable it is. But if you plug in and they're connected to the internet, internet, they could be the.
Yeah, that's, that's.
If they're not.
No, we, we, we have no wire connected to the internet or the outside source to our SCADA system. But the new SCADA system, that is something that they all SCADA systems now are going to, they're going, all the new water systems are being, you, you have the capability of looking at what's wrong, making changes. You would never make a process change in water without physically being at the plant. At least I wouldn't. Because you got to go up and verify what you're looking at on the screen is actually correct. So it wouldn't be for that, but for something like you get alarmed overdose in chlorine or you got a high turbidity reading, you get on there and you see, oh boy, you're going out at a high turbidity reading. It'd be nice to be able to shut the plant off. So you're not pumping that high turbidity water out. You just kill it till you get there and see what the issue is. Right now, we, we don't have that capability and our SCADA system, right now, our SCADA system can't even really tell us what our problem is because of the way it's operated. But.
So we will be paying close attention to that. I also raised the same question with Kimball for the electric department and Brad for the sewer department. Because we have SCADA systems control our operating plants in, in all of those locations. Electric would be, I think, the next most sensitive. But on the other hand, if somebody did something that contaminated the output from the sewer plant, that would be every bit as devastating as I mean, that would be an environmental issue. So anyway, that's just welcome to the modern world. Kimball, where, where, what's the state of your SCADA? So you and I talked about this earlier today a little bit. Are we up to date with your SCADA system now?
We are. We have a couple of loose ends. We had a problem with some media murders that company actually took back. And after that, we will be fully functioning. Pretty much what Brad said sums up my feeling on everything. I did a little bit of research after your email and it said, they claim we're disconnected from the internet as far as SCADA. I don't know how that's possible if it's on my desktop that has internet on it, but it's something I'm going to check into. And if the solution to be totally disconnected is a separate desktop with just SCADA on it, then I think that's the best solution.
Might be, yeah. Maybe a question for Brad or for Bill, but with the World University Games coming, more of a spotlight of the world on us, would that have any influence on people wanting to hack us and cause a problem? Do you have any considerations come up yet?
What considerations have come up?
But keeping a little bit of manual, not a bad idea, especially.
No, no, and, and also like Kimball said, it's limiting the access. That's the thing with the new SCADA system. Once they're in there and they're working on it, what actually is hooked up? Is it because like, see, I don't understand all that stuff behind the scenes. If I can see it, does it mean it's hooked up? I don't know. Is, is there a part of it that can, I don't understand that stuff. So that would be our control people. They, they've stressed and we've stressed and stressed and stressed. We want it the way it is now. And they said, you're, you're not taking advantages of things that is, are totally safe if you just keep staying the way you are. The way we are is totally safe, but they say there is things that you could do to make, like being able to shut it down. That, that's actually safer than not, because if something did happen, it doesn't have to be a hacker. I mean, a pump or something could just malfunction and not stop pumping or siphon. And when you know almost immediately at the pump house, but it could be an hour before you can get there.
It could be nothing wrong, it could be a false reading, but better safe.
But being able to just kill it. And so that's going to be looked at. And like I said, the, the right people are going to have to look at it and talk with other people that understand this stuff because that's above me looking into that.
You can maximize
Yeah.
energy, use less energy when necessary than bumping up when. So ultimately, they are saving. So we just need an organization that comes in and is able to.
Correct. And with the water, it's, it's a public health thing. So they're, they're on top of this. I'm sure a lot of these places that have these issues they're running pretty small, like a like a system like Braybrook or something would be, because down south, they have a lot of them, like smaller well fields and stuff. They don't have big filtration plants like ours. So I think that once we get the right people in here, we'll be able to understand it. Maybe they can make us all comfortable with having certain stuff. They said, taking advantage of some of this stuff is crazy if you can.
Maybe bring someone like Scott Wilson and maybe concepts, just to listen to what they say.
Well, he's sat with me, he's sat with me on some of the things because, like I said, when they start talking this stuff, I might as well not be sitting there. I just, I don't know what they're talking about with this stuff.
We just want to make sure that we're protected. So it's like, for instance, if you would like the option to shut things down and if we are connected, that means that depending on the security system or the flaws, someone else could take over and shut it down and then lock us out of it so we can't open it back up.
Yeah, and the also, I mean, we also would like the capability of our SCADA. Right now, what happens is because of the way it's operating and how old it is, all they can tell me is it's a supervision law. Could be doom and gloom when I get there, or it could be the internet's down or like phone line or something. It's, it's crazy how bad the system is. So you rush it up there and half the time it's something that's totally didn't need to rush up there. Or I would like, once we get this up and running and I, I, we feel more, it'd be nice to know what it is. Which I don't think that even has to be part of the internet. I think that's a whole separate thing that can be the way that that talks up there.
If everything goes according to what you hope, when will the new SCADA system be in place? Is that like a two-year out thing or one year?
No, I would think, once we go to bid, I would think the SCADA system, that'll be, that'll be being worked on right from the beginning. The, you're looking at, I would say by the end of the summer, we should be having all this stuff up and running, a lot of it.
So you think the water plant upgrade will just take on you?
It should only take on construction season, because there's really, it's just upgrading what's there. It's, there's a lot of new stuff going in, but it's not like they're building, building and it's not like they're redoing all the piping. The filters are already there. They just have to refill the filters and add a few more processes to them, some air scour and a couple of areas that aren't there now. And like I said, some variable speed drives on some pumps that just run full speed now. So hopefully, one construction season and hopefully, we get out to bed. We were supposed to be out to bed again and Department of Health is still. I guess they have staffing issues now. That's what they're telling us is the problem. That's it. That's all I have.
Okay, Kimball, you had a proposal that you introduced earlier today. I put it on the agenda just for discussion at this point. Kimball's, Kimball is proposing to, to take one of the employees of the department who currently works basically as, as an inside employee. Get him some training in substation school and be able to use him, I think, at times when when it might help with scheduling the, Chris Fadden in particular was usually busy with meter duties and they say. So I, 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 I think at this point, maybe and, and again, if, if we're going to use this person in this manner, then clearly we have, we have to provide him with the underlying training that's required for a groundsman. Substation school may be an option. Kim, I, I, what I'd like to do is ask you to work with with your commissioners on this and I don't know how long this will take to, to work through. I will send out a copy of what Kimball supplied me with earlier today, which is the substation program that will be coming up mostly this spring, starting March thirty. And it, it looks like it's all remote training, so it wouldn't necessarily be travel.
No, there's three days in person, one day remote.
Okay.
Wednesday, Thursday are in person and Friday's like class review and test, a test. And they're doing that remotely.
So if, if it, if it places everybody, we'll ask, we'll ask the two commissioners to work with Kimball on that and bring a recommendation to the board when you're ready. Does that work, Kim?
That works. And I did run across the in-depth agenda for the school and I can't say enough good about the school. I attended it. It was excellent. There were a couple of engineers in the class that had no electrical background and it gave them a great foundation. So and to be able to use the, you know, another employee in the substation when necessary or out in the field would be a great asset to the department. The proper training would be great to go along with it, so.
I'll get, I'll get copies of that to the other trustees, Kim. I.
I did order it to him, Craig, but I'll send to everyone that more in-depth agenda for the school.
Okay, that would be good. So we'll move on from that. Bill, just a brief update on the police reform and reinvention.
Project draft should be up by the end of this week. We had a listening session last Wednesday night and we had no one show up for it. One sign up and it didn't seem to be a lot of interest. So then we'll put it out for public review. Probably have to special board members meeting to accept it.
Yeah, what has to happen here is once, once the draft is available, it will be published for public response. We'll take any, any material that comes in that needs to be amended will be done and then the draft will come to this board for action. I anticipate that we're probably going to have to have a toward the end of March, a special meeting to cover that, because I don't think we'll have it in time for the second meeting in March. But just, just so you're aware of that, and our goal is to deliver it to the governor, to the governors, to the state, August, April first. And then we'll be done. They don't have to do us or exempt. They're exempt. It blows, it blows our mind that the state police, which is the biggest law enforcement agency in the state of New York, as far as, as far as we know does not have to do with this.
Would you not just mirror their policies? There might be a little more story.
No, it's like everything, like everything they do, every place like that, get into the city, it's like everything we have to follow for water. The city, New York City is exempt. So they, they make us follow all these rules, make water safe. And New York City is exempt from all the rules we have.
And, and their water has to travel a long distance to get to them.
And they say it's not economically feasible for them to do it. So let's make us all pay extra money.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's good work though, because they, they now have security forces that protect those water sheds. Okay, under other matters, I penciled in a couple of things. Supervisor and I this may be partly Jason's response to your email yesterday, where we were talking about the the Cannon and Pond hockey program. We did have a meeting with Eric Chapman and Matt this morning here, supervisor and I, to just simply review everything that they had done. We have their plan, by the way, and that plan has, it meets the state's requirements. It has passed muster with Linda Beers and it's a, it's a smaller, it's a very small event by most, by comparison. Some of the teams are housed at the Golden Arrow. The hotel itself has appropriate standards in place. There are others that probably run the range from other hotels to product, vacation rentals, as, as we learned today. If they're positive, if, if, if they're positive, they're told, don't come. That's the first thing. A lot of these participants are actually they're adults who are passionate hockey people, those that I've met. A lot of them are pretty responsible business people, business owners, right? So it's not to say that they don't have a good time and we talk to them about, about appearances and more importantly, the ongoing relationship that we want to keep very secure with Cannon. So I, I, I think it was, it was a, a good meeting that closed the gap on everything that they had done. Well, they've been in touch with us right along. Twenty-two teams, similar local, it's more regional than it is. This is not a countrywide event from what, from what Eric was saying. Maximum one hundred and thirty people. They're following New York State protocols. Hotels following the right protocols. Overall, the judgment here is, is, there's a reasonable level of risk with everything we do in like classic events, and I think people should know that. But I, I spent this week speaking with a supervisor who gets, right, he has a direct line to Mr. Beers. And one of the things that I've spoken to him about was that there's a a wide gap of information that we don't know. Obviously, with hip, we don't know the, the people unless we happen to know somebody. And we have, we've had a little bit of that around the village, even in the village departments. But what's more important to us is knowing where these positive contacts are coming from and who they, what industry they represent. And both Jay and I are of the opinion that the largest segment that North Elba is dealing with is coming out of our restaurants, bars and kitchens. There's information out there. We're just simply not given access to it so that we can confirm that. That to me makes sense because we can have five thousand people in the village as we may have had last week. They're not testing. Presumably, they tested before they came here, if they're not a state. I would also add, you know, it's, it's probably impossible for us to know whether they are practicing quarantines this program requires. But the good news is that we're, as, as, as they move the vaccine program further along and we're also beginning to see some declining numbers. What's troublesome for me, because I, I see this report that Jay gets every day, is that North Elba in our county still continues to be the township that's registered. report that Jay gets every day, uh, is that North Elba in our county still continues to be the township that's registering a bigger number, it's not huge, it's simple digit.
But it's every day.
Yes, every day.
But it's every day, these are new, new positive tests, so, uh, you know, when you hear, uh, as, as we did, I mean, we've got a, uh, we've got one, one traffic control personnel bill still.
Uh, they're back to work.
Back to work now, so he was what, two weeks?
I think it's, uh, it's, it's actually, he's positive, so seven days.
Seven days, so.
If you're only working, it's ten.
Yeah, so you, you, you can see that the state's beginning to back off a little bit on some of the more extreme. I don't know that they were extreme at the time, the, the more significant days, two weeks, now down to ten days, that's good news. But we're still seeing, uh, you know, very tight, uh, interest as far as our public health people are concerned in terms of gatherings of people, and, uh.
I, I think, uh, and I think that the point I was trying to drive home in the email is you've engaged in, not that you haven't in the past, but you and the supervisor engaged in the conversation, although as you, as we, as the events come in, we can communicate that was part of the discussion, and that you, as a supervisor, are leaders of our communities, do care and investigate it, and, uh, there is a sense of, uh, there's a sense of, we're looking out for you, and that's what happens.
Now, now, let me say one, one, one additional thing, because we have the National Women's Hockey League here, it was a wonderful potential opportunity for the classed in, in many respects. It failed. And to the best of our knowledge, and again, that organization did not, I, they did, they did get better at communicating with Linda, I'm grateful for that. But, uh, my opinion is that there was an administrative failure, and that was the message today that we were passing on to Eric and Matt, is that, uh, there's just, we, we can go just so far, and we have to trust that they're going to use everything in their ability to, uh, to maintain the integrity of the plan, and it's out there. And again, I think Canaan is a good one, I mean, this is a very small event scheme in the village, but, uh, Canaan has a, has a big impact on our local economy, so we want to see them back here, we want to see them doing as much as they did before, when, when the time is appropriate. But, uh, the, the appealing thing to this event is it's an outdoor event, and there are all of the, all of the gathering type activity that would have been done last year, when they had ninety-six teams here, uh, isn't happening, there's not even an opening ceremony. And they will have people, including, including those two gentlemen, on the ice, it'll be making sure that there's no, uh, public, because people are interested in what's going on out there, and ordinarily, it's a pretty nice event for the village, uh. So I think we've taken this, the precautionary steps that we can take.
Correct, and before you leave that topic, how many ice sheets will they have for this event?
Well, last year they had twenty-two, I'm, I'm guessing this year was only, uh, three, two teams, three?
I think Tracy told me today, there's only three ice rinks, twenty-two teams, and I think that's all he said, there's three.
It's four on four, so there's, at, at any one time on a, on a, on a rank, there'll be eight members plus the rank tag.
Are, are we, we're cleaning the ice this time?
No.
No, so we're just gonna?
I, I haven't done that for a couple years.
Got out last time, so I was just kind of hoping. Peter, do you have three rinks or four?
Five.
Five, okay.
They made, they made one more today, it's, it's in terrible shape, but we're hoping tomorrow is gonna melt and refreeze and be in good shape by Thursday.
Tracy's doing that, right?
Tracy's doing that, yep, and, um, and the guys from Canaan.
Right.
You know, one of the other interesting observations that came up in the discussion, we were talking about the super pole effect, and, and how careful they were with their staging of spe- the spectators, the twenty-five thousand they had there. But what they couldn't control was what happened in the city celebration afterwards, and which brought tons of people out with, uh, some, some practicing the mask and some, uh.
And I think that's where the partnership with the private sector, with the shops, being at, being strictly adhering to the, the protocols, and are, you know, oversight, just having those conversations to ensure that, like, because, because of the the failure of the, of the bubble of the previous one, we are, we are caring for our community, we investigate it, you have your plan in place, it's approved by the DOH, we anticipate that, and then we, you know, hope we partner with the shops on Main Street, that they follow the product protocols so that we can have this successful event going forward. And I think that would, uh, and you're gonna, and just kind of circle back to what you were saying earlier, Mary, it's not gonna go smoothly. No matter how meticulous we are, it's just not gonna go smoothly, but if the community trusts the fact that we are providing a slight oversight and holding them accountable, they all understand that that's just part of what we need to do to open that.
So there's that, um, the next item I've got, um, as, as I begin to think about looking ahead here, it occurs to me that we are two years out, uh, a little less than two years from the university winter games being hosted here, and, uh, although I, I served as a liaison, um, the, uh, that, that situation, I've spoken with the supervisor, I think it's going to become critical that the town and the village have, uh, we, we need to ramp up and increase the communication between, uh, the, uh, North Country Sports Council and, and our community, because they're going to, coming, starting, they're starting to consider the, the for example, promotional science, it's gotta go up. All of that's gotta come before various, uh, groups here in the, uh, village and town. So, uh, I have a meeting at noon tomorrow, it's a Zoom meeting with, uh, with Ashley, Jim in Canada, I'm not sure who else, probably one other person from there, girl. Uh, and we're going to discuss the creation of that liaison that's needed between town, village, and over there. Because they're gonna start calling on our departments for things, they already are, because they're talking about, for example, beach volleyball. The discussion so far hasn't resolved completely the requirements, but we know that they're looking, for example, to make, create six volleyball, uh, surfaces over the, uh, surrounding lacrosse area now, I think that's where they won't help. And, but that still leaves the championship game, uh, they're, they're very hopeful that it could be in the municipal lot, uh, where everybody in the community would be able to, uh, to see it, um, it, it might be, it, it seems like a great idea to have to put up temporary bleachers. But, uh, but the concerns that we have are the construction concerns, the condition of that surface, uh, when they might be doing this event, which I believe would be, uh, June of twenty-two. And, and, and the fact that if it's a permeable surface, I'm not sure what what we might be able to do for them, so these are the kinds of things where we need to get into those, uh, discussion circles and, and be aware of what they're talking about. So I'll have more information after, after tomorrow's, uh.
In this discussion, is this the logistical component of it, not necessarily the marketing component of it?
This is, this is the logistics that's hosting me of that.
Okay, so the nuts and bolts of carrying on the events now.
Marketing, they've got a whole marketing group that, uh, and, and my presumption is that if we if, if, if we get involved in those kind of discussions that, uh, I'm hopeful that maybe our, our newest hire might be where some of that will go, because we don't have the staff to deal with all that stuff.
Sure, I thought you would have some sort of influence in when it rolls out, what I mean.
Exactly, that's, that's what the purpose of this meeting.
We would want it to roll out too soon. People may, the community may not, the optics may not, we may not be ready for it yet.
So, much more to come on that, um, and I think they've been somewhat slowed down by the whole pandemic experience as well. Um, I actually think they thought by now they would be moving out of the beach house, because they, they slowly, but they're still there, and frankly, I, I think from our perspective, we're happy to take their rent for a while longer. Seems to have been a good, a good relationship.
Craig, they're looking to move up to the Cornell Farms building that's vacant now.
Well, that, that would make sense, um, when the time comes, they were, they were originally going to occupy the beach house until this time of the year. And, uh, there hasn't been any discussion about the moving on, but as I said, I, I, I'm not pushing them out. I will tell you, and this will come up with the next board to work with, uh, uh, the Board of Elections in Lisbon Town, uh, is, has, has to locate a site in North Elba for, uh, early voting, which would, and one of the spaces that they are interested in is the beach house. Uh, that would require that building for about it, probably in total, a two-week time period. It's, uh, I, I, I doubt there's a lot of rent that comes with it, but, uh, but unfortunately, state law has been changed, uh, right now, that site has been over at Lewis, which is really more in the center of the county, it makes sense. But the state law now requires that it be hosted in the township with the highest population in the county, we are that township. So you'll, you'll be hearing more about that, I think Allison maybe, maybe we'll, uh.
For the cooperation, if they, if the Olympic sites of the, uh, main street construction program, I think, helping them out there.
Well.
Hopefully there will be a result.
Ob- obviously, we have to look at that in terms of what else we're using the building for, and you know, if the, if the sports council is out of the building. I know that, uh, I've talked with, I've had some discussions with Ashley, and they've ranged as far as during the event itself, they want to make use of the beach house for some of their some of the requirements that they have to have. But, and, and, and again, uh, I, I think it's, it's all preliminary at this point, uh, I don't, when I, when I looked at the requirements, I didn't actually feel that, that those were the requirements that the beach house was gonna be adequate, but, uh, because when they, when they put an installation in, they, it, it also comes with the supportive services like food service, and we can, we have a warming kitchen there, but that's all.
Craig, what are the actual dates of the games, twenty-twenty-three?
Oh, January, and, uh, I wanna say I wanna say around, roughly around the twenty-first.
And how many days do they run?
Um, they will, we will see them around here for, uh, the, the majority of it over a two-week span. Uh, the games themselves, uh, are shorter, but, uh, there's a buildup to get ready for. I, I can get you that information.
That's okay, I probably get it online.
And, and again, that's information that, that, you know, we need, the, the community needs to start seeing that, so they can be aware of it, and.
I don't conflict with Pond Hockey.
Um, probably won't, well, I don't know.
I mean, they have to work around it, move it forward, whatever.
So, but, but, but it's gonna be a, a major event. Um, other than that, I, I had a, I've had a, Denise and I have been holding on to it, I had a request, had a request for the Walk Out of Darkness Group, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, it's now coming out of, uh, the, uh, direct, the executive director that's located in Albany, but, uh, they're looking for Sunday, September nineteenth, noon to three P M. They're hopeful that they could use the Nits Park, and I cautioned them that, uh, I would not be able to answer that until I knew what the construction might do or not do, and I said, number one, there may not be much, much parking. Uh, certainly won't be any parking, other than the M B T lot, uh, you know, they bring three or four hundred people in here, that's probably not a good location, I am still encouraging them to use the horseshoe grounds this year, which would be available, she said, well, we've always liked the fact that our our participants could go in the stores and they, they shop when they're here, and they, they really have a good time with it, and I said, well, they can still go in the stores. I just think that Nits Park may be, uh, may potentially be difficult. So, we, we held off on it, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll see what our meeting on the twenty-fifth produces. If we have a better understanding of the construction schedule, then I'll get her back on the, on the line. We certainly want to help them, and if there's ever a year that suicide prevention is, needs, needs support, it's right now, because, uh, it with the pandemic, there's, there's a ramp up of this kind of activity. Sadly enough. And, and we're one of the, we're one of the locations that's really consistently over the ten or twelve years that they've been doing this here, has, uh, has produced really good results. Anything else? Gotta be something, this place is crazy busy.
This weekend it was.
All of the, uh, all of the absentee ballots got nailed out yesterday, uh, I will say that it was thanks to the, uh, very capable fold, manual folding, our, our folding machine, uh, didn't support us, so, uh, last Friday, and I suspect Saturday and Sunday, key, key people in the offices were taking, taking the sheets home and opening them and getting them, so they were all stuffed in envelopes manually. Uh, there were two sheets in each envelope, it, it was a real manual undertaking to get those all done. So I think we will, we will owe the thanks to the ladies that came to that one. I don't know how many paper cuts we're gonna get in this store. But I think the community will appreciate that, I, I, I think it was a good decision, even if we only get back ten percent.
It won't be interesting.
Okay, well, if we don't have anything else, we can, make sure we all have other things we'd like to be doing.
Maybe not, but I don't.
I'm gonna take the recording offline then. Well, certainly I believe that a T guy who went to school for it.